And welcome to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Auburn, August 12th, 2019. Per the open meeting law, we would ask if anybody is recording this meeting. Being none, can we all stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we have public comment. We have Mr. Matthew Benoit talking on the town electric supply rate.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Benoit, the town energy manager, also Auburn resident at 145 Barnes Street. I am here today because of our town electricity supply rate. I was speaking with the town manager earlier today, and we've been getting a lot of influx of calls of people who have questions about their electric bills and the new supply contract that the town signed last May. So I just wanted to go over what that contract is and why people are seeing it now, just so they have an understanding of their bills. So what the town did is, as you know, we have a program where all the residents can enroll in an electricity supply contract with the town. We had signed a three-year contract with a company called Dynegy starting June 1st, and people hadn't seen this right away because it takes some time for the National Grid bill to review the actual month in which it was billed. So folks didn't see Dynegy on their bills until they received their June and July meter reads this August. So they're seeing a different company. In the past two to three years, we've had Constellations, but now it's a different company called Dynegy. I just wanted to assure the town residents that it is the town contract and that it is not a scam or anything else. We did see some of those articles in the telegram about some other towns and cities that are, where their residents are suffering with supply rates from the industry. However, Auburn's right on top of this and wouldn't allow that to happen to its residents. Just want to touch on the rates. The rate that we used to have with Constellation was 12.165 cents per kilowatt hour, and that will change over to 10.354 cents per kilowatt hour, start effective June 1st, but you're starting to see it on your bills that were issued this August. And that rate of 10.354 will be effective for the next three years. Whereas the savings in the summer, and people see their usage go up, air conditioning, of course, so you'll see some high numbers, but the rate is actually 1.8 cents less than it was during our previous term. And most of the savings that we're going to realize with this new contract are in the winter. The winter savings, when we expect rates to go up to 13, 14 cents per kilowatt hour, we're still going to be sitting at a nice 10.3 cents. So residents will find most of their savings in the wintertime. So just wanted to make that proclamation to the board and the residents so that they have a better understanding of the program. And if anyone has questions, they can call me at the town accountant's office anytime during our regular business hours.
Thank you again, Matt. Just one more thing, if people do have the questions, I know this is new information coming forward, and I think it's fabulous, but where can people call to ask questions and get that information if they have something that comes to them?
Sure, they can call me directly, 832-7721, right at the town accountant's office. If they want to call the number that's on their electric bill, they can call the supplier also, but I'm going to have the answers just as quick if they want to call me directly.
Great. Thank you very, very much for coming in.
Thank you.
It's great news.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may just send a public comment, I just, very briefly, I just want to have a, make a clarification regarding our last meeting. So at our last meeting, we had an applicant here, Sheldon's, for a license, and for the third consecutive meeting, they had made, you know, some derogatory comments to me, were rather aggressive. So I let it slide. Then the town manager spoke, and then I spoke again and addressed what I called the manager, because he is the manager of Sheldon's. And watching it in replay, it could appear to some, as it did to some, that I was targeting our town manager. I want to be very clear that my comments were addressed to the manager of Sheldon's. He, you know, he made some flip comment about me, why don't I go on his Facebook page if I wanted to know something? And, you know, he continued to be disrespectful. But I could see where somebody may have thought it was the town manager, so I want to be very, very clear. The town manager continues to have my support and utmost confidence, and if I did have an issue with her, I would not attack her at a public meeting before giving her the opportunity to say something. So again, it was not the town manager, it was the manager of Sheldon's I was addressing.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On the public hearings, we have a flammable storage permit at 117 Washington Street, the application by Lundgren Collision Center, and it's for 7:00, so we are on time with that. I would need a motion to open the hearing.
Soft.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Have we got a representative from, well, first off, before we get started, has any board members got any questions, comments? We do have our application in our packets tonight, and with all the information from the fire department, the application has been presented to us, it seems to be in place. And we've just received a, the letter from the fire department night from Captain Moran, and reviewed the plans, and he said that he had no objections and would recommend that the board issue the license for propane storage. Again, is there any questions or comments from many board members? Being none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I see there's a notice of butters. Before closing the hearing, I just want to be sure there are no butters here.
Is there any butters here for the propane tank installation?
I'll make that motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I would like to have a motion on the license.
I'll make a motion to approve the flammable storage permit at 117 Washington Street.
Is there any further comment? So the motion's been made to approve the license at 117 Washington Street for the flammable storage permit. Being no further questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And thank you for coming in. Next on the agenda, we have a change of manager from the AMF Bowling Lanes, doing business as the AMF Auburn Lanes, 101 Southbridge Street. We also have the documents in place, and we've had a chance to review them. I'll make a motion, we open the hearing.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. You all have the application in front of you. Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Berthe?
Just for clarification, so the, the new manager is Jay Goodlow. I'm seeing Alicia Silva, I'm seeing Jay Goodlow, I'm seeing managers, general manager Paul Clark.
Mr. Berthe, I think maybe we can have some of those questions answered. Is, Alicia, would you come up and join us, please? Now, would you just introduce yourself?
Alicia Silva, I'm the general manager currently at 101 Southbridge Street for AMF Auburn Lanes.
Okay. Mr. Berthe?
Okay, so through the chair, so are we basically announcing that Jay Goodlow is going to be the new manager?
No, so I'm actually the new manager.
You are the new manager.
From Eric Mahoney. Jay Goodlow runs our corporate office and handles all the corporate paperwork for change of manager or anything like that. And the local district manager that needed the approvals to motion everything through.
Okay, and we always had a great relationship with Eric. Is he no longer there?
He is no longer there. He's in a position.
Okay. All right, well, welcome.
Any further comments, questions? Being none, make a motion, close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change of manager to Alicia M. Silva at AMF Bowling Centers Incorporated, doing business as AMF Auburn Lanes, 101 Southbridge Street.
Okay, motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Next we have on the agenda, we have Eastland Partners for the proposed multifamily workforce development reserve at Ashworth Hill and Laker Street. And I think before we get started, what I'd like to do is have Eastland Partners go over, possibly some of the summary, summarize some of the questions that we had here of impact to the town, and only to what our responsibilities are as the Board of Selectmen. Any other questions should be directed to the planning board. Clay, would you please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Clay Williams. I work in planning and sustainability for Eastland Partners. Let me just get this queued up here. Great. So we came before you at two meetings ago to present a municipal impact analysis presentation. We have increased our proposal from 250 homes to 320 in the community. My methodology in this presentation has not changed, only the number of units that these multipliers are being multiplied by. So here is our new breakdown of bedrooms. We have 32 three-bedroom units, 160 two-bedroom units, and 128 one-bedrooms, adding up to 320. I'm a little frozen here, hold on. All right. There we go. Okay. So here are the differences in our site plan with this new proposal. We're not impacting any new wetlands, there's really an indistinguishable change to the site. You can see the little weight, oh, okay, I guess not. The blue circles on the right-hand side show where new buildings have been placed to get to 320 units. Man, I'm being slow here, hold on. So why does 320 homes make sense for this site? First of all, there's more revenue to the town, the increase in revenue is larger by percentage than the number of new homes in the community. We're taking advantage of existing infrastructure. That stoplight put in place was previously there for over 350 homes from the previous development proposal back in 2009. Like I said, we have minor changes to impervious surfaces, and we still don't impact any wetlands. In terms of the 40B law in Massachusetts, 320 homes in this community will bring Auburn right below the mandated minimum 10 percent, you'll be at 9.9. Other than Worcester in central Massachusetts, basically no other town is close to meeting this, so that would set a really positive precedent. And then lastly, it allows us to do more for the town, it helps the economic feasibility of a water connection that we have talked about at the Development Coordination Group meeting and at the previous proposal. So with all of my data concerning schoolchildren and things like that, nothing has changed. We've increased from 52 to 67. The new total cost would be $550,000. As I said before, education is changing. In terms of traffic, nothing has changed, we've already projected for this number of All of the infrastructure is still owned by the community, nothing will change there. So in terms of our new site plan, there's a fire station up in the right-hand corner, will be managed by Wing Gate Properties, nothing's changed there. Local preference is a way to keep Auburn residents in this community. The review of some of the police blotter calls, most of the calls that happened were focused on commercial businesses, and other studies also confirm this. The same cost estimate limitations are here. The residential share of property taxes is 67 percent, so 33 percent would come from the commercial sources in town. So here are our updated costs for police, fire, and DPW. We are multiplying by 320 units now instead of 250. Through discussion with Fire Chief Stephen Coleman, we talked about the fact that the ambulance receipts in town actually show that more than 67 percent of the cost is borne by residences, so to account for that, I used 100 percent as that efficiency adjustment. Those just show how different services change with new housing. And then here's the real benefit to the town, it brings your mandated minimum of subsidized housing, basically right up to that 10 percent. The same benefits are still realized, you'll be in compliance for a period of years. There'll be more green space in town. We've already mentioned enough about the housing crisis. So here's our figure for auto excise taxes, you're looking at just under $200,000. Real estate taxes have increased to just under $1.2 million. Revenues are at $14,000 for sewer. When you total up all of these costs, you get $792,000, just below 800. Stabilized revenue is $1.4 million. One-time sources, which come from building permits and connection fees, are just over At the end of the day, the town can expect revenues in excess of $614,000 every year. A lot of jobs and a lot of economic contributions are supported here. The in and out flow of Auburn has already been covered. Conventional zoning, we already talked about too, this site could support just about 40 homes, which would cover just about the same impact with significantly less revenue. So now we're getting to a little bit of the construction schedule, which basically just shows how the site is going to work moving forward. At the end of the day, we're anticipating full occupancy by January of 2023. It'll be phased in three sections with about 100 units each, and that's basically the end of how the changes in terms of the unit number will impact the Town of Auburn. And now Logan is going to talk about the local initiative project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Right. Now, we did, I think it was about six and a half minutes. My goal tonight, I'll keep it brief, I think that it may be most productive, I've kind of read a couple pages here quickly into the record, basically outlines what the local initiative program, LIP, as it's called, and I think it gives everyone a good idea, then I'll get this information to you, you know, after tonight's meeting. So here we go, don't critique my reading skills. "Local Initiative Program, LIP, is a state program that encourages the creation of affordable housing by providing technical assistance to communities and developers who are working together to create affordable rental opportunities. LIP was established by the legislature in 1990 in response to a report by a special legislative commission which found the state law defined low, moderate income housing as any housing subsidized by federal or state government under any program to assist the construction of affordable housing. This definition had previously been interpreted to mean financial subsidies only. Cities and towns had little incentive to undertake housing initiatives which did not require direct state or federal assistance, but which are otherwise within the intent of MGL Chapter 40B. LIP allows the Department of Housing and Community Development to provide technical assistance that qualifies as a subsidy. The LIP may also issue a site eligibility letter for a project, a prerequisite for a developer to apply for a comprehensive permit. That's what we would be doing in this situation. Unlike conventional housing subsidy programs in which a state or federal agency must approve every aspect of financing, design, and construction, LIP allows most of these decisions to be made by the municipality. LIP regulations and guidelines address those program components that must be reviewed and approved by DHCD. For example, incomes of households, surge, fair marketing, profit limitation, and establishing long-term affordability for the units which are built." So with all that said, that's what, kind of the picture of what the local initiative program is. So the second part, how it works. Developers seeking to build single or multifamily homes, condos, or apartments where a certain percentage of the units are proposed to be affordable, work with town officials to obtain approval. Such units must serve households below 80 percent of the area median income, the units must be subject to use restrictions to ensure that they remain in a community's affordable housing stock, and must be sold or rented on a fair and open basis. DHCD provides technical support to both the town and the developer. If a development cannot be built under existing zoning, the developer may seek a comprehensive permit allowing the development to be built at a higher density than allowed under existing zoning. LIP projects are subject to profit limitations. For homeownership projects, profit and developer fees to all partners and owners are limited to no more than 20 percent of the total development cost. For rental projects, the LIP regulatory agreement signed by the community, developer, and DHCD limits distribution of return to all partners and legal and beneficial owners to a maximum 10 percent equity per year. That's it in a nutshell. Ultimately, what we do is, it's, it's a broad brush, starting out, this makes sense, we believe we can support it, we come together, fill out the DHCD application, we sign it, you as the highest elected officials in the community sign it, that then goes to DHCD for approval, which starts the process moving forward. Then, once we have DHCD approval, which technically they use the word subsidy, DHCD gives us approval back in the form of the subsidy, which is typically called a site letter, which that allows us then to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and start the full permitting process. Now, in the comprehensive permit program, everything is kind of funneled through the ZBA. All other boards are still involved, all other boards still have comment and input in the process, yet it is, it is kind of orchestrated and handled through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's it in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Logan. I guess one question I have is, the DHC, that seems to be your go-to people for permitting. Your construction schedule says permits should be by the end of the first quarter of 2020. When do you foresee this board receiving the permits for signature?
Well, as the process goes, as I, it's, what happens actually is, we work a little more, and it, it basically is a broad brush. It's not a situation at this level where, you know, it's, it's going to be the approval of where the sewer line's going to be and exactly where the lot layout is, and how far this sits back from that, and all those technical things. At this level, what we do is, it's really kind of the broad brush, we think this is good for the community, it has potential, it can help us, we need the housing, we believe it's a great location for this type of housing, we think it has other benefits for us. It's really moving forward and signing that application, and as far as your involvement, as I say, once that's done, then it moves to DHCD where they do their review process, make sure everything is in order, copacetic and all. And then they come back, and then they issue their site approval letter, that comes back to us, that then allows us to make application to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's when the formal permitting process starts here in the community.
Great. Thank you. Board members, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is in regards to local preference. So it's my understanding that you're now looking at 320 units, and of those 320 units, we, the numbers you gave us, we have 25 percent that are considered the affordable apartments, right? So that would give us 80 units. Of those 80 units, we, the project allows for up to 70 percent of those 80 units. So now we're down to 56 percent of those units, given local preference. 70 units.
You got me with the math.
Okay, so, so just, just, for this discussion purpose, just, let's assume I'm right.
Okay.
Just, just for this discussion purpose. So now we have 56 units, because I absolutely agree, we need affordable housing in Auburn, but we also need affordable housing for people who we want to, who, you know, grew up in Auburn, who are working in Auburn, who want to stay in Auburn, who can't afford affordable apartments, young families, whatever, seniors who are leaving their homes, that they, you know, raise their children and are now looking for affordable housing. So, so those, and, and this is a significant impact on the Town of Auburn, like, we have to acknowledge that, it's a significant impact. So I'm asking for the Auburn residents who are looking for affordable housing, so now, go back to my math, 56 units out of 320 would be designated for Auburn preference. But of that Auburn preference, you have four categories. One is current residence, so they, that's a yes, current residence. The other three categories are not Auburn residents. Households with children attending the schools, so that's somebody who maybe got in the lottery in the school system, living in another community, so now they get preference, but they're not Auburn residents. Employees of local businesses, we know a lot of them are not Auburn residents, so again, we're not giving Auburn preference. Municipal employees, although the manager certainly, you know, looks at Auburn residents for employability first, there are many municipal employees who are not Auburn residents. And then back to the fourth category, which is current residents. So just for the sake of math, you take those four categories and you divide it further by four, you're down to 16 units for Auburn residents, hypothetically. So my question is, are you willing to look at additional units for Auburn preference?
Well, one of the things, this is what we give, we get to do together. The, the local preference is, is, it's not black and white, kind of as you say. Say, for example, if we put together a group, and say, a couple of the members here on the board, yourself.
Excuse me, Logan, would you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So a couple of us got together and we put together a committee, and we figure out, how do we want to do this? And so we come up with the different things that we want. You don't have to have them all, and there is flexibility within it. I don't want to sound vague here, but then what happens is, say for example, you, you have Auburn residents that also work in town, that also, or say that, that could be your first lottery, and all those people, you know, could be in it. But then the next one would be, maybe they, they, they work in town, but they don't live here. They, what happens is, and I'm probably not saying this real well, there's actually multiple bites at the apple, if you will. So as you, you know, you, you sign up, and then even beyond that, if a lot of Auburn residents came came out, and they didn't fall in the local preference, or they didn't get in one of the lotteries, they're also still in the general, which would be, you know, the whole picture. In our experience, which I, when I've, you know, done it in the past, I would say, more often than not, it's not a case of having enough, it's more of getting the outreach out there to get people to know about us and reach out, because it, you know, they're available. And it, common sense tells you, you'd rather have, you know, as a business person, let's say, I'd rather have people I know and people who are local than somebody I don't, if that makes any sense. So, you know, our goal would be to do, work that as much as we can.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I mean, I just, this is, this is an important thing, I think it's probably, I'm going to assume important, we've had lengthy discussions about this, and, you know, the concern is that Auburn residents do not have housing. And I just, you know, you look at these numbers, and you look at these presentations, and you say, you know, allows up to 70% local preference. I just want to be clear that it's, 70% of the 25%, which is of that number 320, so we're now looking at 56 units, which are given local preference, out of 320. So I'm hoping that, that that's something, whether it's a subcommittee that's formed or whatever, that's something that you'll give serious consideration to.
I'd love to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berthew.
In the presentation, it was mentioned of the fire station, and being that there was discussion with the chief, and seeing that the chief is here, would it be possible to have him come up and kind of give his views on the, you know, on the impact and on the fire station part of it?
I'll refer to the town manager.
And some of the impact figures.
I mean, we could certainly invite the chief up, but I do want to be clear that a lot of these impacts, they were brought to the attention of DCG, excuse me, of the DCG group, and it was discussed amongst the department heads. Some input was given back to Eastland Partners to come up with the numbers, so I'm sure the chief can speak to that, but I do want to be clear, just to make sure everyone understands, the impacts that you see here tonight are truly estimates. There is no, I think we're trying to do the best we can to estimate the impacts. We, I say we, we're trying to do the best we can to have Eastland estimate the impacts for us, because we keep asking for that, but they will be based upon whomever moves into these units, and that's where we're going to actually, you won't know how many children are going to move in. You can estimate it based on industry standards, you can estimate the impacts on police and fire, but I think we all need to recognize, the impacts could be far greater, or they could be less. It really all depends on who actually signs those leases, and it's going to be, I assume it will be fluctuated, because these are rental units, these are not ownership units, so that's constantly going to change. So I'm sure the chief is happy to speak to it, but I just want to make sure everyone knows, we're grappling with this as well, trying to look at these numbers and say, that's a given snapshot in time, but that snapshot is going to change, given different points in time.
Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as far as the impacts, I can't speak, and I won't speak to the impacts on the police department, but certainly on the fire side, as Mrs. Goodrich, you know, just mentioned, this is a significant project, you know, for the town of Auburn. I will say, before I started, is a project that I support. I think that housing is much needed in the community, so I think overall, it's a good plan and a good project that's been laid out. But there are certainly going to be impacts to the fire rescue department. Basically what we do when any project comes into community, whether it's this residential housing project, we've already sort of run the numbers on the Mary D. Stone School, and the property on Vinyl Street, we're able to derive some pretty close estimates on call volume, based on like facilities that we already have within the community, and call volume, statistical call volume that we respond to on an annual basis. And that pretty much stays consistent with really all of the housing units that we have in town. So we're able to derive some pretty close statistical data, based on like properties. But the other thing that we do is, we reach out to communities that have similar projects, like the town of Holden, which actually, Eastland Partners has a Holden project, smaller in scale in terms of the number of units. But when you're talking about estimating call volume, you still look at that, and then you're able to project it based on our call volume. So I worked closely with Clay in coming up what the estimated call volume numbers were. We were in agreement on what those were. So I estimate that we will have an impact of about 2.5% increase in our call volume when the, when the complex is fully developed in that three-year period, and that's going to translate to about 75 to 100 calls a year. And again, when you look at communities like Holden, Westboro, that have, you know, similar call volumes, there are industry-standard calculations that you use, based on how is the number of units, based on percentage of the call volume in those communities. So easily, we are going to be in that 75 to 100 calls a year range, so translates, you know, roughly to about one every four days. Certainly over the construction period, there's going to be impacts to not only our department, but DDIS, when we're talking about the building inspector, and the fire prevention division. But then, once the buildings are actually built out, although DDIS, not that they go away completely, but because of these are rental properties of five or more, these are also going to require annual inspections from the fire prevention division. So there's going to be long-term impacts, you know, for the department as well. So just to clarify one thing that Clay said, and he might have misunderstood what I said relative to the ambulance receipts, the fact that we have ambulance receipts that contribute to our budget, it actually does not mean the taxpayers are paying more, it means the taxpayers are paying less in the budget, because our budget is offset by about $900,000 a year. So the taxpayers are actually paying less from the levy as compared to other departments, not more. I just wanted to make that clarification. But like I said, just to reiterate, it is a good project, but it's a large project, and it will, it will have an impact not only in call volume, but long-term inspectional services.
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
And if, between the three of you, if you could tell me a little bit more about, is it a private fire station that you're proposing on the property?
Mr. Berthew, I think he's referring, I think he's just pointing out the location of the West Street Fire Station.
Oh, because it looked like it was on the land when...
He's correct. It's the West Street Fire Station. I just wanted to show that there's very close proximity.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry for that confusion.
Any further questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one, through you to the town manager. Has this, when will this information be brought to the school committee superintendent, and will they make the same presentation? This, I believe, from, what I've heard from school committee members is, they're already at max, so they're concerned about additional classrooms, additional teachers, so I'm just wondering, when this presentation will be made to them, and how they can begin to prepare for this?
Through the chair, I can't speak for the school committee, I don't know how they're going to schedule, but I can tell you that they have had much discussion about this already. The school superintendent and I are in touch on this project. I, early on in this process, recommended that Eastland Partners meet with Dr. Brunel to go over the impact numbers and the data, and the mechanism for calculating that. So they, the school committee has been aware, Dr. Brunel has been keeping them aware at their meetings. Most recently, their last meeting, she did mention to the school committee that they were coming back this evening with some revised information on the increased number of units. We did not have this presentation available to us until, I believe we got this last Tuesday or Wednesday, which is right when I sent it to the board. So prior to it becoming public with the board, it was not handed to the school committee, but they have been verbally told what the increased numbers are, and had also been updated after DCG. I did ask Dr. Brunel if she was willing to send someone to DCG or attend herself. So we don't normally have someone from the school department there, but we thought the magnitude of this project really demanded that we have someone from the school department be there. So they were at the DCG meeting, they did hear all about this, and Dr. Brunel shared most of that data already with the school committee. I believe they were waiting to get more information from this evening, to see what was going to be presented as far as what the LIP process is, and I believe their questions, my understanding is, their questions are also, what type of role does the Board of Selectmen play in the negotiation of any potential impacts? You know, any kind of mitigation? What types of wish lists, so to speak, can we submit? We have reached out to the school committee and all the department heads to start gathering information that we feel will be impacts on the departments, and starting to put together a list of things that we feel might be worth a discussion that we want to present to the board for your consideration. So we have kept the school department in the loop. I don't know when the school committee is next meeting, but I know Dr. Brunel has kept them in the loop right along.
But they'll have, this presentation will be sent to them, to the superintendent?
Well, the superintendent called me this morning, just to make sure it was still on the agenda, so she's already aware, and this goes on, it becomes public immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Little Liberty.
Through the chair, I was looking at the difference between the site plans, and I didn't see anything immediately about any increases in parking for the site, adding an additional 100 units. I was just wondering if there was any that I'm just not seeing, or what the plan is there, if there are any thoughts that there might?
I, it feels the same way for me, but we maintain the parking ratios, so the parking quantity did go up to maintain the same ratio effectively as what it had with the smaller number of units.
Thank you.
Through the chair, my understanding was it was 1.5 cars per unit was what you calculated on your estimates for the excise taxes, so I'm assuming you used that for parking as well?
It's actually 1.7 and change is what we have available.
Okay. Okay. So that's, so you were conservative then in your estimates on the auto excise taxes, that 1.5? Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Yes, Mr. Berthew.
Back a couple of meetings ago, when you did a presentation, we had, I had actually said, you know, if, was there any possibility of expanding and putting, having a couple of buildings with more floors, with an elevator, so that we could get more senior house, you know, accessible units? And I just wonder, it sounds to me like, with the units that you added, you stayed with the, what's it, the three unit, three, I mean, three-floor, three-story?
We did, and we looked into it and talked to our architects, planners, and just overall design group, and for the, you know, we were cautioned somewhat against it, because it's bordering on, we're pretty suburban here, and once you start going to five stories, it starts becoming kind of an urban thing, and it gets real tall. Plus, the way we are, we have 96 of the total are accessible, so it's a fair number.
Thank you. Mr. Little Liberty.
Combining those two points on parking and accessibility, I did find a couple of the lots that would have been added, to bring up the numbers. One of them seems to be somewhat far away from the building, so I'm just wondering if any residents that sign up to be, or live in the housing, if they'll have any preference, either handicap spots closer to their specific building, or how that would all be sorted out?
Absolutely. In, I don't know how they do it, but in our other communities in experience, somebody sits and figures out the walking distance, and kind of assigns spaces, and then there is a fair bit of flexibility within that. You know, not everybody that has a handicap, or not everybody has a handicap placard that kind of needs one. So, you know, definitely that's a typical thing where that's taken into consideration.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I just, if I may, I just have a couple of questions as well. So first of all, I want to thank you, because we've been asking questions for months, and you've both been very responsive, and we appreciate it. And I know we have shared some of the questions, always shared all of the questions that the board has received from residents, as well as anything that we've received from residents with Eastland Partners, so I thank you for addressing those as well. I do have a couple of questions more for the benefit of the board and for town administration. So just, can you summarize for us, what is the benefit of the Board of Selectmen voting to approve of entering into an LIP with the developer, versus if the board doesn't go into an LIP, what would happen? And then the second thing is, let's assume the board then decides to take that vote. What is the process for that? When do they get the draft application? And when do we start the next phase, and what is that next phase?
Let me start with, as you say, first with, what does the community get? As Doreen mentioned earlier, we sit, we work through things like local preference. We, you mentioned, you know, wish lists of different things that we may be able to do in and around the community, you know, the water system being a huge one. So, you know, it's an opportunity, you know, as it says, it, to kind of be more of a partnership, you know, because we sign up for this together, and we start off, and if the partnership is going south, what happens? Partnership breaks up. So, you know, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to work together, the community can, frankly, how do you say, can get more than if it was a situation where, you know, the typical 40B, where we go directly to the zoning board of appeals. And frankly, it just feels better. It's, you know, I was thinking about a saying, you know, I'm sure all of you have heard, you know, before, and I might have even said it here, you know, once before, you know, if not here, where? If not now, when? You know, I'm clearly, you know, the developer, I'm biased, but at the same time, I can be pretty objective, and I've been in the development game for 30 years. I've never, ever found a site that had everything that this has going for it. I take that, and then look at, you know, the current housing situation that we all know exists today in the Commonwealth, in Auburn, and every community around us. And then I add that, and I look at the community, and, you know, it's kind of tough for me, you know, here I am, wanting to promote my development, but I also look at, you know, the, there's been many times, I mean, we see land opportunities every day, and you'd be surprised how often, you know, with a tough piece of property, or poorly located, or whatever it happens to be, the, you know, the seller or the broker, they'll say, well, yeah, 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 you can do a 40B. And it's, there's that attitude out there, where, you know, people come in and they take sites that should never be touched, and they put, they try and push these 40Bs through in just plain bad locations. Well, the way the law is, and the way it's kind of written, because the quote-unquote "need," as it says in the statute, is such that if the town hasn't met that 10% requirement, in that case, that developer has a lot more power to push something through. And in what we're talking about here, because the SJC decided years ago that when you do a rental development, that all the units count, as Clay said, and as his presentation shows, this development, together with the two school developments, literally puts Auburn at that 10% mark. Then, whatever comes along in the future, the community has the ability to say no. Then, whatever comes along in the future, the community has the ability to say no or not there, but over there, or whatever happens to be. That's a big deal, I would think. So, I don't, I hope I answered that question. As far as the process goes, as I had mentioned earlier, the next step is we bring in our completed application, the DHCD application. I actually brought along.
You brought link?
Oh, you did? Okay. I can get them to you, Julie. It's, actually it's on the DHCD website. We'll have ours to you, I would say, within the next 10 days. And with that application, it will have all the meat and potatoes, essentially what you've seen of what the development is, the numbers, the unit counts, the projected rents, the, the financial model as far as the projected expenses, resumes on all of us, from, from us to the architect, to the engineer, the whole development team. It'll have the resume for Wingate Management and, you know, just the full numbers of how things will look. That will get to you, you'll get a chance to absorb it, we'll come in, we'll answer questions, and, you know, at that point, we're going to be at that place, I would say, where it's going to be time to, to decide. Does this make sense for Auburn to move forward with that? If so, that's the time when we, we pick the time, place, sign the application, and as I mentioned earlier, we sign it together, then that application goes to Boston, to DHCD, they do their approval process which takes, you know, 30 to 45 days. In that period, you know, we think everything's moving along, we get ourselves all ready to go, it comes back out, and then we make application to the zoning board of appeals.
Through the chair, if I can, thank you very much. So just for looking at the timing of this, so the Board of Selectmen next meets in September, I believe, September 9th. So if we had the application in the next 10 days, that would be great, because I'd like the opportunity to then share it with the Board of Selectmen so they can at least review it prior to the 9th. And I think we've talked about it before, and my recommendation to the board would be not to take a vote on the 9th, because I think you need the opportunity to get the application, look at it, and have one more opportunity to ask more questions and probably vote more toward the end of September at the following meeting on that.
Would be the 23rd?
Which would be the, yeah, the 23rd. And I know we had asked Mr. Huffman and his team if that would be acceptable to them, so given the schedule, is that still a doable schedule?
I think that's more than fair, because we know we have still a fair bit of information to get to you. I want you to have this information, have plenty of time to review it and absorb it. You know, it's a lot to ask, so I want you to have all of this. You know, my hope would be, as you and I had talked way back when, you know, is, is we'll get our information together, we'll be prepared to come in on the 9th. Hopefully by the 23rd, we'll be at a place where, you know, everybody can feel comfortable, you know, moving forward.
Okay, and through the chair, just, I just feel that, and I know, I appreciate you putting up with me, but I've been a little persistent about getting information ahead of time, because I want to make sure you have it for as long of a period as you can before you have to make any decision. So I guess my other question is, if for any reason we can't get it within that 10 days, I don't want to, you know, even recommend to the board that you commit to that, you still should, I would recommend you still look at it again on the 9th, but just make sure that you have plenty of time to absorb the material. And I guess my question is, at what point does the town or does the board have the discussions with you about impact mitigation? Are there any components of the application, once we get it, that are negotiable, i.e., I'll just, is it the, is it the number of units negotiable? Is it the, the schedule that's negotiable? Is it, how do?
Somebody told me long ago that everything in life is negotiable, so. And I would say, Julie, sooner the better. And, you know, because I'm assuming some of these things are going to have financial impacts.
Correct.
And, you know, we, you know, on our end, we'll need time to plug that into, you know, kind of the equation and all, depending what those things are. And so I would say that if, the moment you have thoughts, or if any of you of the board, if you have, you know, thoughts or ideas, please feel free to reach out and, you know, email or a phone call, whatever, and let's, you know, let's kind of run it up the flagpole, as they say.
So through the chair, one more question then. Would the town and the Board of Selectmen have the opportunity to enter into a memorandum of agreement, or is all that done through the LIP application itself? So how do we, how do we formalize the agreement that ultimately gets negotiated with the impacts on the project? Is it, does it become an attachment to the LIP? Is it a separate legal document?
I would say, let me get you the application and let's look at that, and, you know, that's when we sit down and, you know, we figure out what we need, what the town needs to be comfortable and all as far as memorandum of understanding, whatever that requires.
Okay, because my, my question on that is, should it take a little longer to get that done? If there's an additional legal instrumentation that we need to put together, I want to make sure we have the time to get it done appropriately, reviewed by town council, et cetera?
Right. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming in tonight and presenting that information to us, and I think we've got a little bit more idea of, you know, timeline and what we, is expected of us. And we thank you very, very much, and we will be in touch with you if there are further questions so that we can get them all answered.
Right.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Thank you very much.
Good night. Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have, there's no communications, we have.
Mr. Chairman, can the president raise his hand?
Oh, I'm big, I'm sorry. Yes, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Eileen LaSard. I live at 11 Blaker Street, which is the corner of Albert and Blaker, and I have been exposed to the LIP program before. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. When I hear the term, you know, broad brush, I'm thinking that details are going to get swept under the carpet, such as the traffic pattern, how our fire truck's going to get up to those apartments. Right now, the traffic on those streets can accommodate, can only accommodate a fire truck without any traffic. So I do have a major concern about how the traffic is going to be handled, especially with the additional units. Because if they aren't allowing for additional traffic or changing their figures from their initial assessment, when there was 250 units, either those figures are flawed or these figures are flawed. Something's got to give there. And I'm very concerned about the safety of the people who would rent there, whether they be elderly or children, and getting to them in an emergency. Because when it snows, not even one, you know, everybody has to use everybody's driveway to get past each other. There's not room for two cars, never mind a fire engine or ambulance facilities. So I am very concerned about that.
Mrs. LaSard, have you had a chance to go to the planning board meeting and voice those opinions or concerns?
Oh, yes.
And have you had any response?
Well, they're definitely concerned, and I'm afraid that they didn't receive the respect from Eastland that I thought they deserved.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm very, very much concerned about it. In fact, just three weeks ago, the telephone pole number eight at the corner of Albert and Blaker was hit again. It's been hit multiple times, people can't make that corner.
Hit again by what?
I'm not sure. It was splintered when I woke up. It usually happens at night.
Okay.
So, you know, the speed limit is supposed to be 30, but it's not 30 there.
Okay. That, I appreciate you coming forward and making comment on your concerns. This is definitely something that's got to go back to the, the planning board and to, also to the ZBA, yes, to the final presentation of, for the application. And I think that what we should do is be sure that the planning board is made aware of your concerns and that you approach them and be sure that it's forwarded along and they, they follow up along with, you know, some answers to your questions.
Currently at Albert and Blaker, there is a stop sign that was put up there by Eastland, so it's not a city sanctioned stop sign, but I'd also like to see how that traffic pattern's going to be handled too. And again, I know that's for a different forum.
Okay.
And at what point do we get to see the plans that you have in your hands tonight? Is that available to the public?
This, the, the proposal, the presentation we had tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be posted tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Okay. Okay, next we have zoning board of appeals. It's a vote on the appointment of one of the associate members for a term expiring June 30th, 2022. We've all had a chance to take a look, we've heard the interviews, and is there any questions on that? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, you know, I commented when we had the applicants for the Board of Library Trustees when we did the joint appointment, and we had an excellent field of candidates then. And now, again, for the one associate seat on the zoning board of appeals, we have three additional, very well qualified, excellent candidates. All would, all would serve well on the board, and I hope those who are not appointed, you know, have the opportunity to serve on another committee. But having said that, and filling a vacancy, I would make a motion based on the chairman's recommendation that we appoint Caitlin Bush as the associate member to the zoning board of appeals.
So your motion is to appoint Caitlin Bush for the position on the?
The associate member.
Associate member. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to appoint Ms. Caitlin Bush as the associate member for the zoning board of appeals. Is there any further questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And would you please notify Caitlin that she is now the associate member on the zoning board of appeals? And congratulations, and thank you to our other applicants also for coming forward. It's a very, very difficult decision to make. We had some great, great applicants, and Caitlin's going to go forward, and hopefully she'll do very, very well there, and I think she will. And the applicants that didn't make it tonight, we'd like to see them come back again and possibly approach another commissioner or board for participation. Again, thank you very, very much to all. Next, we have votes on the special town meeting for 2019, and we recommend Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you. I just, a couple of things here. First of all, we are recommending that we hold the Fall Town Meeting this year on Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 p.m. We're trying to work around some scheduling issues with the entire month. We don't want to go too late into November. We have done that many times, but the earlier we have it, sometimes the better it is for for getting our work done on our end, especially with DOR. The Columbus Day holiday is Monday, the 14th, which would bump your board meeting to Tuesday, the 15th. So my respectful request would be that the board would hold their meeting at 6:00, as you often do before the town meeting, and we'll make sure that we keep the agenda light. It's difficult to say this far in advance how much we'll have on that agenda, but we'll, knowing that it would be a short meeting, we'll do our best not to put very much on it at all and put it either before or after, and most certainly, if we felt there was a need to have a longer meeting, I would let the chair know about that and see if we could schedule another meeting, but we should be able to work around that. We have confirmed, if we can go with that date, that town council's available, the moderator's available, the high school is available, and the important people that we need to get around the table to get this thing done are all going to be available, so.
So the, October 15th is the recommended date, that's the day after Columbus Day, and is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we schedule the special town meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 at 7:00.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then we vote to open the warrant for the 2019 special town meeting.
Correct. Through the chair, based on that date then, we have some recommended dates. We thought we could vote to open the warrant this evening and close it on September 3rd. That gives about three and a half weeks. It certainly gives plenty of time that for us to get everything together. As you know, under the charter, we have to mail it out two weeks prior to a special Fall Town Meeting. We try to go a little bit longer than that, but we, we try to make sure that we give extra time, as the board has indicated that they would appreciate that, and we would notify the boards and commissions immediately that the warrant would be open and closed, so they would be well aware of it also. And then our thought would be to bring it to the board, the draft warrant to the board for a vote on September 9th, which, again, that does give us plenty of time to put the warrant together and get it mailed out to expire to the 15th, which would be the first.
So we need a motion to open warrant for today, Monday, August 12th?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And then to close the warrant?
Similarly, to close, and the third would be?
So September 3rd at 12:00 noon?
Make a motion to close the warrant for the 2019 Fall Special Town Meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 at 12:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we go to discussion and possible vote to send letters from the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to all motor vehicle class 1, 2 license holders urging drivers delivering vehicles to dealerships to be aware of and in compliance with Code of Massachusetts Regulations, CMR 720, Department of Highway, Section 9.03, Section 2, prohibited parking. And in close, we have a draft letter here, and I think this stems from, well, at least from a couple of calls that I had made to the police department for a specific car sales, and there was some parking on the main road, and this letter here will kind of send a notification to all the dealers that there is a, there is something in place that they have to be followed. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support this. As someone who lives right off of Route 20 and travels that so-called auto mile, you know, I've become aware that it's not just one dealership. I've noticed that there are at least three that have the trucks out front, and being so close to on and off exit, entrance and exit ramps to other highways, it's very dangerous, and I fully support this.
Chairman?
Yes?
Through the chair, just to follow up on what the chairman said, the chairman had called me about a couple of times that this has happened, I believe you may have called a couple of times also. I just want to thank Lieutenant Todd Lemon for his work on this and the entire police department, because as those calls have gone, we're trying to encourage people to call the police department first, because they're the traffic enforcers, they enforce citations for violations, and this is a Mass. general law that prohibits parking on state highways. That's, there is a law around the books, and the citation is given to the driver or the company that the driver works for. So the problem for the board, and I know the chair has asked if there's any way we can kind of hold the dealership's feet to the fire on this, because it's creating a public hazard, a public safety hazard. The problem is, the vehicles and the drivers aren't owned by the dealership, they're separate entities. So Lieutenant Lemon has reached out to a couple of the dealers, he's gone down there, he's spoken to some of the drivers, he's actually reached out to a lieutenant in a neighboring community, another community of Norwood, which is also known as the auto mile, to see what, how Norwood deals with this, and it is an issue. And the problem being, again, that you can't cite the dealership itself, because they're not violating state law, it's the driver that is. And a lot of these drivers, as I understand, they're coming from all over the country, they may come to Auburn once and never come back, so even if you cite one driver, you may get another driver who's here next week who doesn't know what the law is in Massachusetts. may get another driver who's here next week who doesn't know what the law is in Massachusetts. So two things have happened. Lieutenant Lemon reached out to Mass. DOT and asked if they could help us with signs, and we expected just a few signs, actually, and we're not targeting any one dealer, as you mentioned, it's many of them, and it should, it should, the letter should go to all dealerships, but they did, the state did come out last week and install 55 signs along Route 20, reminding people that there, per state law, there is no parking, unloading or loading on Route 20. So that's a great thing. I want to thank DOT for doing that, thank Lieutenant Lemon for getting that done. And then with this letter, we're asking for the support and collaboration of the dealerships to hopefully let their, the drivers and companies that they work with who deliver their vehicles for them know about this. So I think it's a concerted effort for all of us to work together to get the word out and educate the drivers and the companies that are doing this.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. If I can just make one more comment to follow up on Ms. Jacobson's comment. I know that the dealerships can't be held accountable, and these drivers may come to Auburn once, but the dealership doesn't have to take delivery of the vehicle. They can say, "We can't take delivery of that vehicle until you pull it onto our property, so get off the state highway if you want." And trust me, a driver who's, you know, being paid by the load is gonna listen to how, the best way--
That's a great point.
And I think, through the chair, the chairman had also, was initially looking for a way that we could put a little more teeth into this as the licensing authority, and we are still looking at that. We haven't come up with anything yet that gives, gives the licensing authority the ability to maybe revoke a license because of continued violation, but we're still looking at that aspect of it. I do think that we will double check and make sure that, as you issue the annual licenses, that there's a statement on the license, and Mrs. Goodrich had mentioned this, make sure there's a statement that says you always have to be in compliance with Mass. general law. Maybe that's the enforcement authority that you need. So we're looking at that part of it, but as another part of the whole overall strategy, we thought the letter would be helpful, but I think there may be, maybe a way to put a little more teeth in it as a licensing authority.
Okay, thank you. So what is the wish of the board?
To answer the question.
Yes, Mr. Capandah.
How many dealerships are we talking about? We're sending this out to?
Every, everyone that does have a license, we're not choosing. I don't have the number with me. I'm gonna, I'm going to guess 13 to 16.
The only thing that I would suggest, because we're talking about selective enforcement, if we're putting signs on Route 20, we should be putting them on Route 12, too, because we do have a dealership on Route 12, so we don't want somebody thinking that they're being targeted.
I'll double check. I think maybe on Route 12, I didn't check. I did go out and look at the ones on, on 20, so I'll check.
Yeah, there used to be a bylaw also, and when I was on the planning board, we fought this every time they came in, and the reality is, for 20-plus years, it's the same situation. There're just perhaps more dealerships on 20, but it has been an issue of longstanding. Even the planning board, when I was on it, tried to deal with, as you're suggesting, Mrs. Goodrich, "Don't take, don't take--
Don't take delivery.
Don't take delivery," and they said, "We can't do that."
They can.
I'm sure they could, but they're not going to.
They choose not to, but of course they can.
Okay. Is there a motion to get this letter to be sent out to the dealerships?
I'd make a motion that we send it.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded to send this letter out to all our dealerships. Is there any questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's see if this will kind of make some awareness out there and get this thing corrected somehow. The next, we have gift acceptances. We have quite a few here tonight. So first off, we'll start with, for the library, donation by Joanne Johnson for $50 to the library for directors, at the director's discretion, for children's programs.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And the next group we have is for the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound. And I'll read them off, and we'll take them as a group. ERA Realty Charitable Fund for $100. Dorine and Howie Goodrich, $50 to the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound in memory of Matt Jacobson. Rita Kapisch of Holden, $25 donation. Okay, and I have a note here that says, "In response to a recent animal cruelty case, the following donations have been made to the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound." Kathleen Sabina of Auburn, $100. Phyllis Schoenfeld of Milbury, $100. Stephanie Roy of Paxton, $100. Catherine Stone of Auburn, $50. Donna Bacon of Auburn, $50.
Motion to accept with gratitude. I'll second that, and say that I appreciate all the out-of-town people that have found it in their hearts to donate, so I, we, I appreciate that. I'm sure the town of Auburn does as well.
Thank you. So the motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And then for the CPR Automatic Emergency Defibrillator, Town Light Initiative, we have two. One from Speedy of Auburn Incorporated for $833.33, and one from Fuller Automotive Group Incorporated, $1,666.67, and is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude and that a letter be prepared for the--
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Under 5E, we have a request from Brookdale Lady Pond East for recognition of a resident turning 102. What is the wish of the board? We can, through our policy, we are able to send along letters of appreciation or congratulations.
I would make a motion that we send a letter of congratulations to the person as outlined in the letter from Brookdale, August 1, 2019. I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. And then, under 5E, number two, we have a request for an Eagle Scout rank. Josh is one of the youth, Josh Anderson, he's aged 17, is now one of the youth leaders of Boy Scout Troop 53, Faith Baptist Church, and he's requesting a proclamation.
Is there a motion that we send a proclamation?
I can.
So the motion been made and seconded to send a proclamation to Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we have a Drain Layers Application License from McCarty Associates Incorporated, from Leinster Maxx. We have the application, we have letters of recommendation.
I'd make a motion that we approve the license, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, or commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, we move on to item 5G, designation as special municipal employee positions, and I'll turn this over to our town manager for that.
Certainly. We have been approached by a couple of town employees who are also now coaching at the school, whether it be the middle school or the high school, taking a couple of different coaching positions, you know, evenings, nights, weekends, and in order for them to be paid for either their coaching or refereeing, they have to be designated a special town employee, because they're currently already an employee with the town. So we do have a list of other special town employee designations that we've brought to the board over the last few years. You don't designate the person, you designate the position. So we're asking for the board to vote to designate town and school coach positions as special municipal employees. Therefore, anyone who is a town or school coach has the ability to be paid for the work that they're doing. So that would pretty much cover, and also, we want to cover both coaching positions, and the second one is referee positions. They're two different categories.
Okay. Make a motion to designate town and school positions as special employees.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bertheum.
So we have teachers that are coaching now, and they're being, they're getting stipends or getting paid. Is this a new--
It is not new. It was just brought to our attention that we do have some situations like that, so they do have to be a special town employee. A stipend, my understanding is, under Mass. Department of Revenue, a stipend is okay, but a, a more of a paycheck for doing it on a regular basis is considered a second employment opportunity. So stipends are one things, and ongoing, you know, if you were paid for the season, it would be different. So this is what the state requires.
Mr. Bertheum?
I'll just, I'll just accept it as, as is, yeah.
Okay. Just to give an example, we have utilized the schools, and this is a different example, but the most recent one we did, I believe we had a school electrician that was also doing some work for the town, and in order for that position to do work for the town, and we would pay that person, because it was work on top of what their normal workday was, we had to designate that position as a special town employee. It's for doing jobs that are outside of the scope of their normal work. So I, you'd have to look at their job description, but in most cases, we ask them to check with the State Ethics Commission to see if they need to be designated as a special town employee. It all depends on the job description. Some job descriptions specify that they'll do multiple roles within their job description, and then no special designation is required.
So now, all of the teachers, administrators, whatever, that are coaches, do they have to go through an application process with the town and basically fill out a new employment application if we do this? Because, you know, I think it was kind of more simple before where they, you know, call it, call it a stipend, call it a paycheck, call it whatever you want, they were getting paid, I'm assuming taxes were taken out of it, and, and it was, you know, an after-school position, say to coach the softball team or to coach the football team. So are they gonna have to now go through a different process?
Through the chair, that's not done through town administration, that's on the school department. If they're school employees, it's done by the school department. In, on the town side, we still have to go through and, and make sure we have an, not necessarily an application, but we need to have a personnel action form on file that allows us to acknowledge that the position exists, sets the hourly rate or the salary for that position, and that gets signed, and that allows them to pay them. I'm assuming the school department would do the same thing on their side.
So--
Yes.
So the, so the school, and this, I assume is up to the school department and the school committee, are they doing away with all stipends now and going strictly to this?
Through the chair, that's not my understanding, but again, that's the school committee. It would be for those jobs. On our side, we haven't changed anything. If we have a town employee who, let's say, for instance, a police department, we do have a couple of police officers that do some coaching, they don't fill out the application with us and on our side. On our side, the application, their, their personal action form is as a police officer. It would be filed with the school department. So if we, likewise, when we have someone from the school department that does work for the town and the town gets paid, we have a personal action form for that person. So none of those processes change, and this isn't a new law. This has been in existence for 20 some odd years. It's just every now and then, it depends on how they're being paid, requires them to get this kind of designation.
Mr. Capandah?
Is there any urgency that we do this tonight, in case Mr. Bertheum has more questions, and then he can, he can take time to sit with you or however he wants to communicate with you? Is this urgent, that they need this designation?
I don't know that it's urgent, other than I would tell you if they're currently coaching, they should have this designation in order to get paid for that work, so I don't know specifically which coaches we're talking about. Again, it's not specific to the person, it's specific to the position. So I'm really, I'm not 100% sure on that.
I'm happy to hold it, if you have more questions. I appreciate that. I guess I don't think so, because it's, it's basically one and the same, it's whatever, it's tomatoes and tomatoes, so, so I'll go ahead and let it proceed forward with the votes.
And I would mention through the chair that my understanding is that even if you're designated a special town employee, that you have to still file a disclosure with the Corks' office. I think that's part of the whole process. That is also, that process has always been in existence, that hasn't changed. So each, whoever is actually doing this then has a disclosure that they've been voted as a special town employee.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we'll take a motion on the town and school referee positions.
I'd make a motion that we designate town and school referee positions as special.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. We've got a reminder about the volunteer recognition event on September 16th and RSVP.
Through the chair, I ask to put that on, just to remind the public and to remind the, our volunteers, all our board, commission, and committee members, that the Board of Selectmen is holding an event at 6:00 p.m. on Monday evening, September 16th, and it is just an informal opportunity. As you know, it's, it's your, your event to thank those people who volunteer for the town throughout the year, and to specifically acknowledge those who left their appointed positions within the last fiscal year. So, and the subcommittee has reached out to the chairs of the committees and asked that any chair of a committee who would like to say a few words is more than welcome to. So there's a lot of information out there on it. We've got it on the website, ACTV, social media, it's posted in all the board and boards. So we're just trying to encourage people. I know you really need to have some type of a RSVP, so we know exactly how much food you should be ordering, so we really encourage people to, not that drop-ins aren't welcome, but it would be nice to have some kind of account for us to help plan.
Anything else, Mr. Capandah?
Especially if you want to speak, we need you to let us know by August 3rd, so that we can include it in the program, so. We don't want people at the event, you know, wanting to jump up and, and talk. We want it to be formal, and then we want people to be able to enjoy the event, so it's anticipated as a short speaking program. Certainly, we welcome anybody who has anything that they want to say, but we don't want it to be something that they decide that night, and then we kind of have to change the order. We have people come, we asked the chair to come and the town manager to come, and we didn't have one of the legislators coming, confirmed at the moment, so.
Through the chair, can you repeat that date for me, in case we get any calls?
August 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Town manager items. The first one is Eastland Partners, we've already covered that for tonight with the presentation. Now a revised vote on the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Regional Competitive Grant, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Jacobson for--
Thank you. I believe it was last month, it could have been the last meeting or at least two meetings ago, I had come before the board and asked for authorization to file for another EMPG grant. It was a competitive grant. As you know, the EMPG grant that we file for on an annual basis is formula-driven. We're allowed a certain amount of money, we still have to apply for it, and that's what we use to fund Code Red. This grant that I had explained last time, were funds that were available from those communities that didn't use all of their EMPG monies and became available through a competitive fund. The vote that the board gave me at the time was to apply for up to $10,000 for grant funds, that was the maximum allowable amount. In subsequent meetings and conversations with various representatives from EBA, it was highly suggested that we may stand-- it was highly suggested that we may stand a more competitive chance of getting this grant if we apply for a regional grant. So I reached out to the town of Lester and the town of Oxford and volunteered to do all the application and put everything together, but asked them if they would do a regional grant. The equipment would be stored in Auburn if we get it. We're seeking equipment for traffic mitigation and traffic control. So like poles, the same electronic signs that we were looking for for ourselves, we're now looking for more funds to get them regionally. Again, they'd be stored here, but they'd be available to three communities. So we had to get the grant application in about four days after the board took a vote. So I did apply for the $25,000, but I would like for the record, if the board is okay to revise that vote to allow us to accept that. Of course, if there were any concerns and we got the grant and you didn't want us to accept it, we wouldn't. But just to make it clean, I did want the board to know that we applied for more money than $10,000, and it is a regional grant.
I'll make a motion that we revise our prior vote to the sum of $25,000.
I'll second for discussion. I just have one question.
Yes, please.
So if, since we're sharing the equipment, but it's going to be stored in Auburn, if there's a conflict between which town needs it, how is that, how's that all settled?
Whenever we have shared equipment, we develop SOPs, you know, standard operating procedures, and it's generally a written procedure for what determines when there's an emergency and how they sign up for the equipment, what's required. They usually have to sign off and then return it to us. We do it a lot with shared equipment that we receive through Homeland Security, and that ensures that we always, at all times, know where our equipment is, who's used it, and when it's been returned. There's always the possibility in a large-scale regional emergency disaster that everyone's going to need the equipment and there's not going to be enough of it. We hope that doesn't happen, but if it does, we'll have to work with our partners and see which locations are more critical. Since this is traffic management, it would be for those locations where there are going to be more traffic problems, so probably major intersections. So maybe the police chiefs in each community would get together and decide which are the major intersections. I believe we were putting in for two, I think it was two of these electronic signboards, a little larger, as well as some smaller traffic management equipment, some barriers, some portable barriers. So we might even be able to share it within two communities at the same time, but we wouldn't have enough for three. But there are other pieces of equipment besides this grant that we do have access to. We do have electronic signboards already. Some of the other communities have them. So this would just be an added piece to the current inventory.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion been made and seconded. Is there being no other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now what we have is item 6C, is vote to authorize the chair of the Board of Selectmen to send letters of support to the Massachusetts Historic Commission for tax credits for the Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft School redevelopment projects. We have letters in our packets you've had a chance to take a look at. Ms. Jacobson.
Yes, through the chair. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen authorized the chairman last year, Mrs. Goodrich, to send a letter. That was the first round of historic tax credits, and they did apply at the time for the Mary D. Stone School. They did receive approval for some of those historic tax credits. They did not, there weren't enough tax credits to go around the state for funding 100% of all the projects they received, so they're applying for another round of historic tax credits, and this time they're putting in a tax credit application for Julia Bancroft School also. So this is, it just helps accompany the application, gives it more support. We've reached out to our legislative delegation, the Council on Aging, the Historic Commission, so we have a series of letters that goes in on behalf of these applications. And I should also tell you while you're looking at this, the Penrose Development also is putting in another application with the state. I believe it's due in mid-August. And that application is for additional funding toward the Mary D. Stone School, and they're hoping to get that, hopefully, get funded in this round. I believe they come in and explain that to all of you, and they're hoping to get funded in the competitive round, and then in February, if that happens, we could go, they could go forward and apply for funding then for Julia Bancroft, which will have to also get in the cycle. So they're moving forward. They've got a lot of applications pending, and they're working really hard at this.
Motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have announcement of earmarks for Auburn included in the fiscal 2020 state budget.
Through the chair, I did include a letter in your packet from the state Senator Moore, but just wanted to, first of all, thank the senator and Representative Frost, both, for their advocacy in support of these projects for Auburn. These are line items that have been approved in the governor's budget, and one is for $50,000 for infrastructure improvements in the town of Auburn. We had specifically asked for that for Jewelry Square, and I believe the line item in the budget might actually identify Jewelry Square. And it is to go along with all the other infrastructure improvements that we're proposing for Jewelry Square, so it's a nice offset to that. $15,000 was budgeted for the purchase and installation of additional AED devices. You accepted some funds this evening, you've been accepting them for a couple months. The school committee is also accepting them. Depending on where the units are going, we're trying to get all the town fields, so that will go toward those devices. And my understanding is that Auburn Youth and Family Services had also requested $10,000. So we just want to thank our legislative delegation for our piece of it, our town administration piece. We should be hearing soon from Department of Administration and Finance as to where the source of those funds are and what types of paperwork we have to put in to get them, those funds. Generally, to get the $50,000 or anything, it usually comes from a grant source, so they identify the grant and put in the application, and then it's earmarked for Auburn.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, moving on. We have no table items tonight. We are Board of Selectmen member, item discussion, a potential vote to form a subcommittee to investigate ways to increase awareness and participation in our local elections. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, it was my understanding at the last meeting that we were going to ask the town clerk to come in. I have had occasion to speak to her again after our initial discussion, and it was her recommendation that we wait till September because the Board of Registars, with vacations and other commitments during the summer, they would not be available, and I believe Mrs. Goodrich wanted them included. I know there was the question of what would this committee do or look like? I think it's, we want to look at in a holistic way and through various partnerships within the community, how we can incentivize, not necessarily money or anything like that, people voting in local elections, understanding why it's important, how, whether it's this board or even town meeting, really has an impact on their daily life. And I think that's, you know, there were different people that we would probably want to talk to within the community. They would not necessarily all be government actors, you know? We just want to draw a wide net, or that's my suggestion, that we draw a wide net and talk to as many people as we can and see what their ideas are. I know the town clerk, as prior town clerks have done as much as they can to notify the populace that this is happening. One idea I did talk with the clerk about was having potentially, and she was going to investigate if they could do this, the registrar of voters to host an annual debate, but a candidate's forum. She wasn't sure if they could do that or not, but she was willing to look into it because the senior center no longer does that, and I know a couple of years ago, when we were trying to put together something, none of the community organizations wanted to participate, including the two news organizations that we have. They didn't want to participate as panelists or anything else to, you know, offer questions. And I think, you know, the public deserve to know where we stand on issues, though those who run for office, and if we can get some outside organization to have such an event that might get some excitement. I know there is a cable rule that might need to be changed for something like that because two weeks before election, they don't allow any campaigning. This is, to me, to my mind, not campaigning. If it's a sanctioned event, everybody can go who's running for office, you know, I would probably be saying we should ask the cable committee if they would massage that rule so that we could have that up until, you know? That might be something to look at. So, you know, if any of, all of that sounds good or bad, or if anybody else has any ideas, I'm certainly not saying that I have a cornerstone on what this should be. It's a board effort, and, or it could be a board effort, and, you know, I appreciate everybody's input.
I'll entertain comments for board members. Again, he's talked to the town clerk. She was not available to be here tonight, and it was something she recommended for September so that we can get the right people in place to come in and discuss it, so we can hold off any more comments or discussion on that tonight, and we can table it and put it up to our September 9 meeting and see if we get, you know, some more input and maybe get the town clerk here if she's available. Is there any other comments? Being none? Okay, thank you. And let's see. Any public comments? Okay, being none? Has any board member got anything? Ms. Jacobson?
I'm outside, thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have minutes from May 28, 2019, and June 10, 2019. Is there any errors, omissions, corrections, comments, questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just make a comment. Sharon, we have had some pretty contentious meetings over the last couple of months, and I've read through these minutes for you, and if I was an outsider reading them, you certainly captured the spirit of the meetings. What an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich, and thank you, Sharon. Being no other comments or concerns, we'll accept them as presented, and a motion.
I think we have June 10.
Oh, I've got votes through. May 28 to June 10, I would accept them as presented.
I would make the motion to it there.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, and good night.